Why don't you send me this one?
Yep.
And then this one is here.
Oh, um.
I don't know what that is. It's not mine. What is that? Open that first one up. This is, this is the one you sent me, I think. I'm pretty sure that's. Yeah, that's the one I need to open up. I don't know what that other thing was. So. Mine.
Yours.
Yeah, yeah. There was, he doesn't know what the other thing is. There's a PDF here. This, this is the one that he sent me. And then there's this PDF command vehicle presentation.
Well, that's probably just the.
That's what I had.
Okay.
I only have, I only need that.
Okay, right. So you want to, you'll want to use this one. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll put, I'll put this one in, in there. Oh, Santa Claus. Anyway, I know where it is. I'll put, I'll put that one way over there.
I actually just thought.
I've been watching, uh.
This is Tuesday, December 7th, 2024 at 6:10. This meeting will be conducted in person in Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA, Section 403 B2D and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me for a moment of silence, please. And now for roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Council Stactall.
Present.
Council Hanselman.
Present.
Council Martel.
Present.
Council Trenchmontane.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present, as City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts. And let's move on to the minutes. In order to approve the minutes of December, this is the regular city council meeting on December 3rd, 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Nate?
So moved.
A second, Pete?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, uh, no, who, some people. Yeah, Jonathan, I think you were the only one who wasn't here. All those in favor? Thank you. And in order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on December 10th, 2024. And I, I think we were all here for that one when I read the minutes. Is that correct? Martel.
I think I was, um, out sick that day.
For the execu-, okay.
Yeah.
So I need a motion, Pete?
So moved.
And a second, Ann?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. As winter is approaching, many of us will be sick, so we'll probably experience this even more. All right. We'll move on to the manager's report. And Wednesday, December.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I meant the mayor. I want to be the manager now.
No, no, you don't.
No, I know I don't. I know I don't. Sorry. The mayor's report. Steve and I are switching roles today. The, on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, the Sanford City Council had a Sanford, Sanford City Council and the Sanford School Committee had, for the first time, held a joint workshop, which was wonderful. This workshop was to achieve the following goals. First, to better understand what makes for a high-functioning board. Second, consensus on areas that need improvement and how to make things better. And the third was knowing each other and building enthusiasm for our shared work ahead. The person who facilitated this was Craig Freshley. Craig is a professional meeting facilitator, speaker, and writer with an inspiring attitude and a well-earned reputation for helping groups become efficient and productive. Craig has a master's degree in public policy and management. He has worked for the Maine State Planning Office and the Maine Department of Foundation, and currently owns a Maine-based company called Good Group Decisions. What an appropriate name. All of us came away wanting to continue this process, so we're hoping in future years that we have started a tradition where both boards meet together and share ideas. So it was, it was a really fantastic meeting. Okay, any subcommittees' reports? Ann?
The Public Safety Subcommittee met on December 10th. The mayor, Council Martel, and I were in attendance. We did receive a brief dispatch update from the city manager in regards to the RFP that's out for a York County CAD system, and that's moving along in the process, which is great. We also heard from Chief Susie with a Sanford Fire Department update, and one of the major takeaways for me on that update was related to the, the, um, chasm between our billing for services and what we actually receive in payment. So essentially, in 2022, which I think was the, the study date we used, there was a little over $4 million billed for services provided, and just over $1 million actually received. So we're only receiving 25% of billings for the services that we're providing through our fire department. So that was interesting information, and all of that is in the packet if folks are curious to look at it further. And then we received a police department update on the command vehicle, which we'll discuss later this evening. And Public Works, which is new to joining Public Safety, did a great presentation on their operations and initiatives that are impacting public safety. They did a examination of some recent crash activity on Main Street, and a discussion of, um, recent transportation conference presentation that they did. And I did request that the council receive a copy of that. I don't think I've seen it come through, Larissa, but I know Matt had been out. So that presentation would be great to pass along. So great meeting, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? Nate?
Just really briefly, um, the Land Bank Authority met Wednesday, the 10th as well. We discussed how the city council passed the abandoned blighted building ordinance the, the last meeting, and started talking about ways to enact that pol-, um, that ordinance. We also discussed a list of properties that are on our watch list for either being declared dangerous or that have already been, been declared dangerous and taking next steps. Can't get into too many specifics on those, but those were what we discussed.
Thank you very much. And to let the public know, almost everything that is on our agenda, week after week, has been taken up at a subcommittee meeting. So sometimes it might appear we're going a little fast with it, but we've read all the backup material several times, because not only do we have it for the subcommittees, where three of us are on each of the subcommittees, but we also have it in the backup material that we get for this meeting, which hopefully we've all read before we come to the meeting. So there's a lot of stuff done behind the scenes before we even come here. So if we ever talk too fast and you're kind of like, you have a question, when we get to any of these topics, you're more than welcome to raise your hand and ask a question. So please feel free to do that. All right, let's move on to this now, the city manager's time.
Thank you. I do not have a formal report for you this evening. We are in the throes of budget preparation right now. We started that a month early. All departments submitted a month earlier than, than historical. We started the review a month earlier than historical in preparation for the significant workload that will come with the city council starting the end of January. So we'll be bringing that budget forward with you. Review's going well. We're not very deep into it yet, but the review's going well so far. On the homelessness aspect, we've spent a significant amount of our time. We've done a follow-up meeting now with state legislators, talking around advocacy for improved funding for shelter operations. Talked to them about emergency actions that may be needed for our shelter programs statewide currently. DHHS is in rulemaking right now. We, we gave them the indication, them, the legislators, that there are, there's some assistance that they could provide there via that rulemaking. You might have seen it in the news around Portland's use of general assistance and such. So the state's DHHS is trying to provide some clarification for general assistance and how that could be used towards funding shelter operations in the future. And then the next piece that's not on the agenda tonight continues to be tax reform. So I've, I've informed the city council about the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Platform, which is nine key elements that are out there. I won't talk about, to you about those nine key elements. Many of those are tax, tax-related issues, trying to glean more tax revenue to the, to the municipalities under the auspices of reducing property tax burden. So the overreliance on municipal operations is property tax burden. So knowing the tone of the legislature that, that we're hearing, money's going to be tight for the state because revenues are, are likely going to be projected to be relatively flat, not increasing. Therefore, we anticipate there, it's going to be pretty hard to get most, most anything past appropriation. So we'll continue to work towards better funding mechanisms within the central programs and services, looking at better funding towards the homestead exemption and the increase of the homestead exemption to directly address that, and even as much as a constitutional issue that the state can't back out of that. So for example, the senior tax stabilization program, they put that in place, they put it in place for a year, and it's, oop, too expensive, can't fund it anymore, and they pulled it back. That kind of instability is very difficult to plan around for sustainable operations, as well as, as to where the tax structure is coming from. There was also an initiative on there that talked about a tiered mill rate. Many, many states have what's called the tiered mill rate. So there, all properties are assessed uniformly, typically on, on market, market rate, the market values and such into that. But then the mill rate effort that's applied to various properties can vary. Many states that have a large tourism base or coastal properties and such into that, where the second and third homes and a lot of short-term rentals and such, apply a tiered mill rate where those properties pick up a higher portion of the, of the effort than do those homes that are occupied, such as our homestead exempt properties, that are occupied by individuals that live and work in the community. So for Maine, that would be a very progressive and beneficial thing, but you must balance that out so you don't shift that burden too extensively towards businesses and such and, and mess that up. So that reform was pulled off the LPC's platform. And now bear in mind that we have a group of very well-informed assessors that are part of, of those efforts. We have well-informed managers that have been around this table for a long time, talking about the three-legged stool of property tax, income tax, and sales tax, income tax including corporate tax, and that Maine is completely out of balance, that municipal operations are wholly funded on the burden of property tax. Other states have a dedicated portion of sales tax that offsets those property taxes and such into that. So at the end of that LPC process, I asked for the formation. I said, I've been at this for over 20 years now, and never once has this, the group, has the municipal group come forward with comprehensive tax reform. It's always no different than the state legislature that I criticize for chip, 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 disassociated pieces that have sweeping ramifications, they give a benefit in this area, and somebody else bears a greater burden over here without recognition of what the relationship is, who wins and loses in all of those checks, check systems. So to that extent, Maine Municipal has formed a municipal tax reform group. We had our organizational meeting on there today. It seems to be a very good group, so I have high hopes for it. So we'll spend the next two years working on that. I don't seek to reinvent the wheel. We're going to pull from, we've already pulled several examples from, from other states as to how they, their taxation structure works differently. So we're not talking just property taxes here. You're talking the whole thing. Sales tax, corporate tax, income tax, the whole kit and caboodle. So we can do that from a neutral position as opposed to the historically partisanship that, that takes place in Augusta. I've asked for regleaming of, uh, Representative Cates. He finished as Senator Cates. Roger Cates had the most comprehensive tax reform package a number of years ago on the table that failed in the legislature because it was too much, too quick. So we're going to have some time to work on that. And then the assessors group has had a national conversation around a lot of elements, like the senior property tax stabilization programs, tiered mill rates and such into that. So it seems to be a very strong working group, so I'm going to dedicate some time in that to see if we can bring home for our city and for the benefit of all of Maine's economy, a better way of taxing for state, county, and municipal services. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Steve. I really appreciate that. We've talked about that for quite some time, and I'm very glad that you're moving that ahead. And you're taking basically the leadership role in that, so I admire you for that. So thank you.
Well, they, they have exceptional staff at Maine Municipal. So they just, once, once that was voted in by the group, that the staff will pick up a lot of the research burden for us and such.
Excellent.
Just take some seasoned people to, to push where, where the direction is going, so.
Well, thank you. All right, moving on to communications and presentations. Presentation to the city council, the fiscal year 2023-2024 audit from Christian A. Smith, CPA, CFE, partner with WhipFly30 along Crete Drive, South Portland.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. I hope to go through the results of the annual financial statement audit and provide you with a high-level overview of the results and focus on some, maybe some of the more important key information, and provide you with an opportunity to, to ask any questions that you may have. So our audit firm, we are independent auditors. We work for the council. We are, we, we work with management to perform the audit, and you've hired us to express an opinion on the financial statements, and, and the financial statements and, as well as internal control are the responsibility of management. The results of our, the result of our audit is that we have expressed what we call an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, the finance, which means the financial statements are fairly stated and have been presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So this is just a list of all the different reports that we issue. We, we do a separate set of financial statements for both the city and the school department. Now, of course, the, the city's financial statements include the school department, as it is a department of the city. However, we do also issue a standalone financial statement for, for the school department as well, and submit that to the Department of Education. We also will on occasion have a management letter comments and what we call a required communications letter. That's actually, that letter's actually been combined for both entities. We also issue a single audit report and data collection form, so that's where we have to test the federal grant funds that are received by both the city and school. I believe there was approximately seven or eight million in federal grants received this, in the prior fiscal year compared to about 10 million in the year before that. We also have to report to the state of Maine Department of Audit the results of the audit of the city. That's, that was a clean report as well. We also have to provide a reconciliation of the financial information for the school department and submit that to the State Department of Education, and, and also talk about the compliance with the Maine School Finance Act. And, you know, just to kind of sum it up with, with everything, you know, we have clean reports across the board. There are no findings, no issues to report. So that's just what I'm kind of summarizing here. We don't have any, anything that we would consider to be a material weakness or a significant deficiency to report for either the, the school department or the city. There were no changes in accounting principles. There were no difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management, and no audit adjustments. So, you know, that tells you that the, the work that they're doing at the finance department for both the city and school is, is excellent. They, they're doing everything they're supposed to be doing and provide us with what we need to perform the audit as, as efficiently as possible. And the last bullet here is just talking about the federal grants. So each year, different federal grants will be tested by us. In this past year, there were still some significant COVID money spent by the school, about $3 million of ESSER funds, and about $1,200,000 in special education. And again, there were no, no findings as a result of the work there. Any questions before I move on?
Any questions?
So I, I did add a few slides here this year. Hopefully that helps with you, helps you provide, helps you have a little better understanding of the information that's in the financial statements. So I just pulled out a couple pages that I thought were, you know, that are going to be relevant as we'll be talking about, you know, a lot about fund balance and carryforward balances in some of the other slides with some of the charts and graphs I had, charts and graphs that I have. But, so this page is just, is just the general fund, budget to actual. That's, that's really where most communities focus the most on. And just, you know, the results for this past year were, were positive overall. If I'm looking at, I'm kind of focusing on the, let's see if I can get this mouse to show on the screen there. Yeah, if I, this right-hand corner here. Revenues exceeded budget by about $1 million. Expenditures exceeded budget, I'm sorry, didn't, they were favorable to budget by about $4.4 million. One thing that's kind of important to understand there is that a significant amount of that favorable result in expenditures goes to capital improvements. You, you have a, a capital improvement budget, and when it's not fully spent, it carries forward to the next year. So you'll see that in later slides where there's a fairly significant allocation of your fund balance that's been earmarked towards capital projects. You know, bottom line for the year, your, your fund balance increased $745,000. So total fund balance at the end of the year, almost $16.7 million, and that is city and school combined. That's, 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 that's the whole, the whole entity. The next slide, just also wanted to make sure people are aware that there is more than the general fund. Special revenue funds accounts for your federal grants, state grants, and other revenues as well. So there's about $16 million flowing through that fund this year, and it's got an ending fund balance of about $5.6 million. So that's, that's money that is restricted as to a specific use. You just can't use that for general city purposes or school purposes. There's a capital projects fund as well. Generally, that's bonded debt. Usually, that's for school. It's for more significant construction, like school construction and elementary school renovations that have happened in recent years. So there are those other two pots of money, but again, those can't be used for, for anything that's, like I'd say, gen-, the general operations of, of the city. So this next slide just kind of gives you some information of what, what's in the management's discussion and analysis. We are, as part of the financial statements, we're required to also report on what the financial statements would look like on an accrual basis. So that includes all of your, you know, fixed assets capitalized and depreciated. It accounts for future liabilities, for your debt service, as well as pension plans, post-retirement benefit plans, et cetera. So on an accrual basis, it shows that your assets exceed liabilities, or your net equity is about $70.6 million. Now, of course, most of that is tied up into physical assets, so your buildings, your, your roads and, you know, land improvements and things like that. So it's not actually funds that you can spend. But that's just, just to make you aware of that financial information that is in, in there. In total, fund, the fund balance for all funds is about $28.1 million. In total, fun, the fund balance for all funds is about 28.1 million. Again, we've got a fund balance of about 16.7 million. And so breaking that down, 745,000 of that, of the increase in the prior year, the schools' portion of that was a $514,000 increase and the city's increased by 230,000. This next slide just kind of rehashes some of the budget to actual changes. There'll be, there'll be a slide that'll show you, I think that's coming up in a couple, about two slides that'll show you the breakdown of the changes in the different components of fund balance. Non-major governmental funds, so that was the slide we just looked at. So that's your special revenue and capital projects fund showing, you know, increases in those funds as well. And then also I'll, I just, I'd like to make sure that people understand, I mean, the, the city does have a significant amount of cash in the bank, about $33 million, which is an increase of 2 million from the prior year. And we look to make sure that all the cash is fully collateralized or insured against custodial credit risk. So if there is a, a bank failure, your, your, you know, your money is protected and you won't, you won't lose your, lose your funds. This next slide is another new slide this year, just to kind of show you the different components of fund balance. So we already talked about how the total general fund balance is about 16.7 million. And if we break that down into categories, so about 5 million of that is committed for capital projects. So those are projects that have been, you know, voted on by the council. There's about 2.5 million, which is what's considered to be assigned and that's ju, that's usually set aside for use in next year's budget. And the remainder of that is about 8.9 or 9 million for what we call unassigned fund balance. About 2 million of that is the school, 7 million is the city. And these other governmental funds, again, we've already talked about those. Those are the capital projects and special revenue funds. I don't know if I have the opportunity to pause if anybody's got a question here or...
Bob?
Yeah. I think this is appropriate time. So we're, we're taking a million dollars out of the fund balance every year to offset property taxes. And I'm just, question is, that's, that amount sustainable now for the foreseeable future?
Um, I would say it, it certainly is because you still have, you know, even if you, if you were to use all of that within this year's budget and actually spend in that fashion, you still have a fairly large amount of unassigned fund balance to, to continue to do that for a few more years. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do that for, you know, say maybe five or six or seven years in a row, but it's certainly sustainable.
Yeah, I guess maybe that's, that's good information maybe for the council to have. I mean, I'm looking at increasing fund balance of 745,000 and we're taking a million out and that's why I'm asking the question on sustainability. So we're good for a while.
Yes, I would say so.
And how are we going to know when we're not good?
Well, I think it's, historically, I mean, so you have had, even, you know, historically you have voted to use, you know, the million dollars or so fund balance each year, but the actual results for each year have turned out where you haven't actually used the million. You, you've had a surplus each year. So I think it's going to start to be at a time period where you start to actually work into using that and have to increase.
See a tip the other way. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So the next series of slides really is just, it's, it's the same information we've seen, but just maybe in a, in a graph, in a, a format of graphs, just so you can kind of see where we've been. So, you know, again, we talked about the, you know, committed fund balance currently stands at about 5.1 million. So that did increase this year by about 1.2 million. You know, the assigned fund balance hasn't really changed much the last two years. So that's, that's basically your budget carry forward. The unassigned fund balances come down from say 10 million to about 9 million, but still at a, at a healthy level. You know, this kind of further breaks down, just so you can kind of see. Hopefully it's not too much information for you here, but I tried to separate, okay, we've got the school fund balance, the top part of the schedule, and you could see the school fund balance at the end of the year is 4,364,692. So they had an increase in fund balance of 514,000. The city's fund balance started at 12 million total. And so all I'm doing right here where you see, you know, in, in total, fund balance increased by 745,000, but I got to back out the schools' portion of that to get to the town. So the town's increased by 200,000 to 12,325. And so, you know, other things that are a little, that are, that are interesting to notice here too, is so you can see, you know, the capital plan went from 2.5 million, oops, to, to about 3.7 million, which, which means the money you had set aside to, for, for capital, capital items in the general fund budget, you didn't, you know, you didn't spend that money. Maybe that, those projects were carried forward to next year or in process or timing or whatever. And you also increased your, you know, amount of fund balance to offset property taxes by 250,000 to a million one. So in the end, it comes down to, you know, here, here's the total fund balances and then you can see the different kind of components here. You know, that, that kind of provides you with a presentation of, of where all the, the items are. Yeah. The next couple of slides, this should go pretty quick. Again, just, just the city's fund balance. For the last three years, you can see it, it's stayed, stayed really steady, roughly 12 million, slightly over 12 million for each of the last three years. So again, that, that, you know, shows you that you haven't been using that, that appropriation of fund balance. Schools' fund balance has kind of, you know, ebbed and flowed a little bit. So it's about 4.4 million now. That's up about 400,000 or 500,000 from the prior year. So that's, that's in a good position. My next set of slides just kind of compare the, the city to other communities that have, well, other communities that are either cities or have a budget that's, total budget that's comparable to, to what you have for an annual budget. So, so this just kind of shows you your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your budgeted expenditures. As a rule of thumb, I don't think anything's really changed with respect to what, you know, people look at as, as far as what's a healthy amount of fund balance. They generally say, you know, you want to have at least one month of your annual budget in unassigned fund balance. So that would be 8% and that's pretty much right where you've been for the last number of years, 8, 8.5%. So these other communities have, they have a fund balance policy and they're, they're, I think, well, most of them are trying to strive to have anywhere from like, say, 14 to 20% fund balance. You know, it, and, you know, but, but the, you know, the position you're in is, is healthy. You haven't like accumulated excess fund balance. And, and also if you consider the fact that you do have the three and a half million of, of committed fund balance for capital projects, other communities don't have that. Other communities also have policies where like, if anything's more than four or $500,000, they're going to go out to bond and they're issuing bonds every year. And this, the city hasn't issued bonds. You've been able to fund that through, through your fund balance and your capital projects. So there's different ways to look at it, but you're certainly in a healthy financial I just have, I think, two more slides. So this is something we talk about each year and this year I added a sec, a second column for Sanford. So the Sanford two column, maybe next I'll put a description on there. But, so, so the first column shows that the debt service as a percentage of budget, oops, is over 12%. And that seems high compared to the other communities. However, you know, majority of the city's debt, the debt service related to school construction is funded by the state. So when you back out the 10, 10.2 million dollars a year that you get from the state to fund your debt service, that brings your debt service percentage down to below 3% and you're clearly the lowest. So I don't believe any of these other communities with their debt have as significant debt that's, you know, state-approved projects that's funded. So, so really what that means is there's less money coming out of the pocket of your local taxpayers. And the, the next slide basically shows, you know, something very similar to this. I, you know, your largest expense as, as with any community is, is the education department. So where do you stand in terms of, you know, your education expenditures and, you know, really kind of right in line with everybody else. But if we back off, you know, the Sanford two here is if we back off the 10.2 million of, of state funding, then you're really probably, you know, kind of the lower, in the lower range of these other communities, maybe more in line with where, where Augusta is. So all in all, that's, you know, I mean, there's nothing here that I would say is concerning or of issue, you know, and it's, hopefully the information is, you know, is useful to you. I don't know if there's any other, other questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We are going into public, there's no public participation. No one signed up and nobody online. So we're going into the public hearing. And let me explain what public hearings are. This is a time that we will be hearing from the public. We have four different things that we're going to be discussing. And what I do is I open up a hearing and then I will read what it is. We go for those people who want to speak for, they can come up and speak. For those people who want to speak against, they can come up and speak. And if there is none, then we just declare the hearing closed. So it's pretty simple. Most of the stuff that's on the public hearing stuff that we're going to be doing, you will see later on in the agenda, which then will be time for the council to ask questions or to have a discussion. And possibly if it's not a first reading, if it's a second reading, then we vote on it. So it's a pretty easy process. So if anybody needs to speak on this, this is your time. All right. I'm going to hereby open a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine LLC DBA Land Race Cannabis for Adult Use Retail Marijuana Stores License at 22 Samata Drive, Sanford, Maine. Is there anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? I hereby close this hearing. The next hearing is a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Blossom LLC DBA Sache, hopefully I got that right, for adult use retail marijuana store license at 9 Renaissance Way, Suite 3, Sanford, Maine. Anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? I hereby close this hearing. A public, I'll open the next public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Green Truck Farms 6 LLC for Adult Use Retail Marijuana Store License at 27 Hancock Lane, Sanford, Maine. Is there anyone to speak for? Anyone to speak against? I hereby declare this hearing closed. Open the next public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Holistic Wellness for Marijuana Manufacturing Tier 2 Licensed at 72 Emory Street, Unit 175, Sanford, Maine. Is there anybody to speak for? Anybody to speak against? I hereby close this hearing. All right. The next is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Let's move on to old business. An order, I need an order to approve proposed zone change to parcel K14-35 and K15-32 to be rezoned from industrial use to urban. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. And if people are wondering, we've already taken this up, not only at our past meeting, but at subcommittee and zoning and, so this has been thoroughly discussed. So do I have any questions? Bob?
I was going to make a motion.
You can do that.
So moved.
All right. And a second?
I'll second that. Just a reminder, this is the Jagger Mill in Springvale as well as the Payer property across the street that's being used as warehousing. This will allow the, the Jagger Mill to be refinished into an apartment, including on the first floor. And the use that's already in the warehouse across the street is allowed in the urban zones. This is, this is a very good zone change.
Just to remind the counselors, we do a first and a second, then the discussion. Not a discussion with our second. Okay? All right. Any, any other discussions on this?
I'm just telling people which one it was.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Thank you. The next is in order to approve proposed zone change to parcel R9-63 and R9-64 to be rezoned to, from rural residential to urban. This must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion? Nate?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Bob?
Second.
Any discussion? Ann?
I was just looking for any summary of the subcommittee discussion because it went back to subcommittee.
I think this went back, was it zoning that it went back to?
This is the, this is the Shaw Field. I was just reminding people what it is. So I don't think there was any substantial discussion.
I noticed we added the deed restrictions to the packet, which was really helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think in general, I think, I mean, we, we, we agree that this, you know, in many ways, this is kind of an innocuous change in the zoning.
Okay.
So, so everybody understands this, the, the intention is for changing the zoning so that may be used for other purposes by the soccer association. And I know I'm not supposed to talk about potential businesses going in there, so I'm not going to go there. But anyways, that, that's what this is all about. And I think that was maybe the nature of your, your question. Yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
I'll just add a, add a comment since I'm part of the committee. Yeah. So there, there's deed restrictions and then anything would have to go through planning and then there's...
Complexities.
Any, anything that needs to, would be added would have to, you know, meet, meet zoning and there may be improvements that are needed, so.
And the planning board and...
Yeah. So, I mean, it seems like it's pretty innocuous. There are other businesses right next to it pretty much. So it seems like not a big deal, even though it would have been nice to, maybe we've seen some solid, a little bit more solid plans than, than maybe we'll do food trucks, maybe it'll be something else. But I'm okay with it moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Thank you. Moving right along to new business. It's not rude if you three guys want to leave now. We won't be offended.
But Mayor, they could stay.
Merry Christmas, you guys.
Brian, if you want to stay for the Christmas picture though, I mean, you guys, you're wearing red.
And if you're wondering what Council Hanselman was talking about is we have a competition with the school committee now, which I really think they've outdone us just because they had an appearance of the elf in their picture. And as hard as we tried to talk Steve into it, it, he just wouldn't do it. That was a very good picture, by the way, for the school committee. All right. The new business, in order to accept the annual audit conducted by Fight... WhipFly. I never get that right. LLC, I know, I missed it the second time. Financial year for 2023-2024. Can I have a motion, please? Pete?
Motion to go forward.
Thank you. Bob, second. Thank you very much. And any discussion on that? Ann?
Just as typical, I want to thank our finance director and department for their efforts that, as well as the school departments that have the level of, you know, skill and professionalism that have this audit, have these audit results. It's not for nothing to get here, so I'm very appreciative.
Thank you very much. Yes, Jonathan?
And I just wanted to kind of second some of those remarks. Just wanted to thank you, thank the, the WhipFly person that was here.
You did it, Jonathan. You, excellent, you pronounced it right.
They've been here before.
Yeah, you're going to read this next time.
You know, I know, I know audits are, are, you know, a fair bit of work and I appreciate the, the thorough report. And I also appreciate, you know, our school and city departments that always seem to come through with these with, with flying colors. So it's, it's definitely great to see that, that hard work paying off. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is that a hand up or you just?
I'll wade.
I'll wade into it. So, no, my, my kudos to the, to the finance department, both the city and the school. It's, it's with great gratification that when I'm meeting weekly with Ronnie, that once a month, the reconciliation slides before me and it's a quick look, it's all balanced at zero. That's significant because that, that has not always been the history here. So, so that's, that's excellent. But, but I did note in the auditor's letter that there was no, no disagreeance, right? How do I get that? That's an inside joke, so we'll let it sit there. But, you know, thank you very much to the finance department. But how do I get the no disagreeance? no disagreements?
That's never going to happen, Steve.
It's never going to happen.
All right. Did we already vote on that? Okay. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
Now they can all leave. Nobody likes to stay for a meeting until they're, after their stuff's done.
Okay. The next is in order to reappoint Sue H. Cody as a register of voters for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026, as required by MSRA 21A subsection 101. Maura?
Move to approve.
A second, please. Bob?
I thought Ann beat me, but second.
All right. Are there any comments? Bob, go ahead.
I, I just want to say again, which we've already talked about, Sue's work during the most recent election along with her staff and what a terrific job was done. I think it quieted 99.5% of any of the skeptics out there that said that it wouldn't work. And I think it's something we'll continue into the future. Also, I think it needs to be pointed out that audits don't always come out clean. I know the auditor just left. And we've had, since I've been on the council, I believe here, that they've been all clean audits, no management letters. Management letters, for those of you who might not know, point out things that need to be done differently. They're either concerns or things that need to be corrected. So to get those clean management letters is also important in terms of procedures, financial procedures. So to, to have this kind of track record, I think is fantastic and I'm very happy to see, see Cody, Sue Cody continue in this position.
Thank you. Pete?
And I don't know if you know that Sue and I, we've been second grade class all the way through class of 85. I think this is an honor when you first swore me in. I was just looking and I messed up because I'm like, look at us. I'm so proud to approve you. So thank you as, since we've known each other forever. So I just wanted to let that not be said.
Sue, I'm really sorry that you've had to experience that all these years.
She might have dirt on me, Madam Mayor, let's be nice.
All those in favor? Thank you. By the way, Pete's the one who tells us about his background all the time and what a wild kid he was. Next is in order to approve the purchase of a police command vehicle using existing FY 2425 funds. Eric?
Madam Mayor, a point of order. Chief was supposed to be in a Santa outfit tonight, so I don't know if this agenda item.
Well, I, I don't know. Should we move ahead or? He, you really told us you were going to wear.
I did, but I added on the side of public safety thinking maybe I should be prepared.
Well, what do you think? You move ahead? Okay. All right. Good. Okay. We'll accept it.
I noticed Jonathan wasn't wearing anything, so I thought it was all set.
He has red and green in his shirt. He has red and green in his shirt. That's better than.
You guys look great, by the way. My name's Eric Smol, I'm the police chief and tonight, let me get to the presentation here, sorry. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the command vehicle for, for the police department. The fire department did a great presentation on this a few weeks back. Chief Smith kind of told you about how the fire vehicle was the multi-tool that they use out in the field. The same would apply for us. I have a short slide presentation, really just to kind of show you what the vehicle would look, look like and talk about some of the important parts of the vehicle. What, the picture you're seeing, seeing there that's in your packet is, is the command box we'd have in the back of the vehicle. It serves many purposes. We carry some valuable things in our vehicle, firearms, radios, stuff like that, stuff that needs to be locked up outside of just your regular vehicle being locked. Our command box would offer security for those types of items. And also, if you notice, where to the right where it says Satina, it also would have radios in it where we could operate on UHF and VHF. That was the situation that we ran into with the school, that we weren't able to properly communicate with all the responding units. So really coordination of departments, if we were to see another major event where we be having most agencies come here. The unit also opens up with a whiteboard, as you can see, so you can keep track of your personnel. Like I said, it had communication systems, surveillance information, workspace for an officer to work. Up above there, there's lighting that shines down to provide a, you know, a nice space to work if, if it's at nighttime. And there'd be plenty of power back there to run equipment and stuff like that. We do respond to a lot of things that you don't think of. Most everything the fire department does go to, we also go to a structured fire. If there's a major fire, like when the mill burnt down, we set up command posts adjacent to them and have to coordinate all our units. So really, we're using it for the exact same reason that they would use it for. We use it obviously on the Fourth of July. We, we do set up command for parades, big parades and stuff like that. And it would, it would definitely allow us to communicate and get information out to officers a lot faster. And just give a central point for everybody to come to. One thing we did find at the, the hoax was as units were responding, it was really tough to identify the police command post because we didn't really have one. So it would be, you know, we'd have some markings on it that would indicate that it'd be a police command post. And how can we afford this? That's really the big question. Several years ago, a couple of years ago now, we did put in for a command vehicle at a price of about $103,000. That was going to be a bigger vehicle, kind of like with the fire department drives now. I don't personally think there's a need for us to have that big of a vehicle. We can get it done for a smaller cost. And how we were able to do that is when we got denied the vehicle a couple of years ago, I really put some thought into it on how we could be frugal with our finances at the police department. And how we accomplished that was getting waivers for our police vehicles. Back when COVID hit, it was really hard to get a police vehicle delivered to the city. Sometimes it took over a year. So we found McGovern Ford down in Massachusetts and McGovern buys six or 700 police vehicles. And we found that if we got a waiver of competition and just bought directly from McGovern, we could buy vehicles that were brand new, but that were a couple of years older. So we've done that for the last five police vehicles we bought. And they're roughly anywhere from eight to 12,000, sometimes more, less than a, you know, a current model year would be. In one instance, we were actually able to find a brand new two-year-old vehicle and that was even more savings. So by doing that in the last five vehicles, we've really been able to save up a considerable amount of money. That included, that along with selling our fleet, once we traded in, as you know, we tried to trade our vehicles and they were around 85,000 miles on it. So that gives us a real good price when we sell them back. This year, we sold them on municipal and made around $15,000 for two vehicles. So that is really the funding source that we'd be using. It would be using the money that we currently have in our CIP for a cost. And in your packets, I have estimates from Southern Main Communications, who does our radios and who will be outfitting the vehicle. And we actually got a, I think it's in your packet, a, a more recent vehicle quote from McGovern. And it came in actually $900 less than the vehicle that I presented at the subcommittee. So there's a little bit more savings there. With that in mind, it'd be about $70,000. We have a couple outstanding bills in our CIP for current vehicles that are being outfitted, but in the end, we would have enough money to do this, probably with a little bit left over, actually. With that said, is there any questions?
Any questions? Pete?
I just want to thank you. This is really good for the citizens of Sanford, a lot safer. So thank you for finding a way to get this done.
Yeah, you're welcome. We've been trying to get this done for three years now. Yeah.
Eric, so will this be the first command vehicle?
Right now, we, you know, our command staff does, this is really a longer discussion, but as we get into the budget this year, you'll see that we're moving away from the leased vehicles because the lease costs are so high. Plus they were Kia's and nobody really recognizes them as police vehicles. We can't put lights in them because you can't drill in them because they're leased and the cost on those are really going up. So what we've done is we've kind of moved some vehicles around and transitioned some vehicles out of CID into command officers and kind of been able to put together some vehicles that work. Will we have three identical command vehicles, just like this one I'm proposing tonight? No, but the vehicle I'm driving is workable and this will essentially be one more vehicle that we can, this one will work the best and it would be a model for kind of where we want to go down the road.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I know there's probably a lot more to this than what we even saw.
Yeah, there's a lot to it. This is kind of just a brief overview. The, the big thing is, is we've, we've really tried to, I'm, I'm pretty frugal personally, but try to save money the best we can and spend within our means. And we, we'd be able to do that because this is, this is a Ford Explorer, just like our regular police vehicles and not a larger SUV. We can carry everything we need in the back of a Ford Explorer and they're $20,000 less than a, you know, Sierra or whatever, whatever you call them. Tahoe, sorry, Tahoe.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
So he didn't bring up that part of the savings is that tiny little sticker that you put on the Cruisers now.
Yes.
Instead of the big body wrap.
That is true. Yep, we.
Because it's a sore topic for some of us, so.
It's not for me because it was my idea. But yeah, we, we transitioned away from the, the body wraps, which were really easily damaged and they were a couple thousand dollars, to just the sticker on the door. And it's, I think it's $150 per car and we put them on ourselves. Burpee sign provides them and we just slap them on.
Excellent.
The officers like them too, which is the most important thing.
We've also done very well with municipal. It has been a great mechanism for selling the, the vehicles. You know, I'm sitting here thinking, thinking about things that we've done in the past, back when everybody was driving Crown Vics. We were able to trade those off more rapidly. If you could trade them off in, in, in current model year, which we are, not here, but elsewhere, we're burning them out that fast. The movie industry was buying them. They'd come up out of New Jersey and they'd load them on a flatbed, you know, buy three or four of them and, and truck them off, put them in the movies, crash them up. We haven't got that for the Explorers yet, right? There, there's not enough standardization for that. The, the whole world, you know, and, and the, the New York cab companies would buy the Crown Vics, you know?
Yeah.
Left and right.
That makes sense.
Because they were so universal and they wanted the heavy duty, you know, brake systems and all that sort of deal, but.
I do intend to have a larger conversation about vehicles when we do the sit down and hear and present the budget.
That'd be good.
And kind of explain to you, probably a little bit more in depth, the method of my madness, but it, it does make sense to me in my head.
And I won't bring up the stickers anymore. Done. I'm done with the stickers.
Any questions? I don't think we've had a motion or so.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a police command vehicle.
Thank you. A second, Pete?
Proudly second that.
All right. And all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Eric. Are you on the next one too?
Yes.
And Pete, I know they talked about buying those vehicles to crash them, but that's not for you, okay?
Well, all due respect, the Blues Brothers movie, they crashed a lot of those, so that's what I'm focusing on right now, Madam Mayor.
They had cop brakes and tires, you know?
Here we go. In order to accept the Ed Brine Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of 14,646 for the purchase of the Five Dell rugged laptop computers, whatever that is, hope you're going to explain it, for the police vehicles.
Yes, this is our annual JAG grant. And this year, we requested to use the money for, what a Dell rugged laptop is, it is essentially a laptop and it's made for law enforcement. If you drop it, if it gets some water on it, if you spill your coffee on it, you know, whatever, it's going to be able to handle all that. And we decided to do these, it is command vehicle related so that we could get some computers for our command staff because we don't have any right now. So we wrote it for five computers and we were awarded this, I don't know, last week, I think. So we're working through, getting it approved. But again, it's just good savings for the city that computers, we don't have to buy out of taxation.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion? Jonathan?
Motion to approve accepting the grant amount of 14,646 for laptops.
And a second, please. Nate?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Was there any good discussion first? Okay.
I'll just make a comment that I think it's great that you're going out to get these grants. I know it's something you've been doing for a while, but I appreciate you doing everything you can to find grants to help alleviate the local tax burden. And, you know, Dell makes pretty good laptops, so I think you'll be happy with those.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
In order to authorize the city manager to enter into an acquisition agreement with Watson and H LLC for donation to the city of property adjacent to Carl J Lamb School. Steve?
So, speaking of Christmas. No, in, in all seriousness, so there, there is an opportunity that's been presented to the city where Watson NH LLC is offering to donate lots H 19 and H 60, H 19-1 and R 648A. So you can see that in the graphics here. If I can get that re-centered for you. Oh, I can't. Just a moment. So it is, it is the property surrounding the Carl J Lamb School. The importance of this property to the school is there's a longstanding vision to be able to significantly improve traffic flow into and out of, especially for student drop-off and pickup into and out of the school. It only has a single point at this point in time. It would greatly improve fire protection services as well as, and, and as to include emergency response. This land mass, if, if accepted, would be donated to the city and allow for the school department to plan on R 648A, this, this portion here, to plan for in the future, a means of constructing the, that improved entrance and/or egress and improve the safety of our school. So it's a significant opportunity for our community. I want to thank the donor for offering the land to the city. This is, this is a huge piece for the school department. I know Matt Nelson is here tonight. I don't know if Matt is, if there's anything else you care to add to this?
I know, good evening. Matt Nelson, Superintendent of Schools. Nothing to really add, I think just reinforce the opportunity that we have here for that. There's nothing, this is something that is more of long-range planning as City Manager Buck identified. We're looking at something that's been identified to give entrance and exit and egress an opportunity to be able to do that. So to have this opportunity now, to have that, so we don't have to worry about what's happening outside of that and to be able to keep that an option for us to be able to then start looking at other ways that we might be able to capitalize on other things that might come our way, grants or other things that we might be able to look at. So it's a great opportunity. We too, as a school department, are very grateful to Jonathan and his family for their support of the school department and in this particular case, the, the location, the area for that. So very supportive and think it's a great opportunity.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion, please? Ann?
With gratitude, I'd like to authorize the city manager to enter into an acquisition agreement with Watson NH LLC for donation to the city of property adjacent to Carl J Lamb School.
And a second? Pete?
Proudly accept, second.
Thank you. And for discuss, any discussion, I just really want to start out by saying, Jonathan, I'm extremely proud that you and your family are willing to donate that land, that you've thought enough about the school, that you knew, well, and I think probably from being on the school committee, that you knew this was needed. So thank you very much for, for that, and your family. Thank you very much. I think your mom and dad would be very proud. Any other discussion? Jonathan?
I just, I think this looks great. I just had a question for Steve. I just, I think this looks great. I just had a question for Steve. Are there any concerns as far as taking ownership of this property? Is there any history on that that we should be concerned about or anything like that?
Is it a brownfield site?
I don't think it's a brownfield site, but I just wanted to just double-check that there isn't anything that we should be concerned about.
No, no, we carry no concerns for this property, and I'm pretty sure that the Water District would support. The city is having this as well, because it abuts a significant aquifer in our community. So hopefully, the Water District sees the city as a good steward, as the current property owner has been in the past. So, no, there are no concerns that...
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the end of our meeting. Let's see if there's any comments from the councils. Pete?
Yeah, it's, it's the holiday season, and I'm a city council. I got a text today from the United States Postal Service. It was a scam. So understand that the post office will not text your phone number for any package missing. You will get stolen from. So just know that that's out there. So thank you. And my son, a proud dad moment, he's acting OIC as the Sanford Postmaster. He asked me, though, if there's any issues, and you know him, do not call his number, call the postmaster office, because his phone would just get inundated with twenty-two thousand people. So proud dad moment there, too. So thank you.
Pete, I'm just gonna call you and have you talk to your son.
Absolutely.
All right, just clarifying that. Any other comments? Ann?
Steve, just clarification. I can share the Growth Council Board change from this morning, or is that okay to?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to share some excitement that the Growth Council this morning welcomed David Nickerson as a board member. He is replacing Bob Hardison, who is retiring as president of the IDC board. And we're filled with a lot of gratitude for Bob's time on the Growth Council and IDC here in Sanford, as he's made a huge positive impact. And we're also very excited to have David Nickerson as part of the board. So want to share that good news. And then I want to let folks know, if you haven't purchased your tickets for the New Year's Eve magic show at the Sanford Performing Arts Center, tickets are almost sold out. Looks like an amazing show, as well as a fantastic lineup in 2025 of additional shows. So get your tickets to the Sanford Performing Arts Center while you can.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Just wanted to say, I think this is our last meeting of the year. So Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year, and we look forward to meeting again in January.
Excellent. Bob?
A little bit of a sad note. I was sorry to see Garbage to Gardens leave our community at the beginning of this month. I don't really know the reason, but I'm guessing that financially it didn't work out for them, and probably due to a lack of subscribers in our community. So I think it's kind of a missed opportunity for us. It was something that I have been encouraging for many years here from the council seat. I was glad to see it fulfilled, and I participated in it, but it just didn't work out. And lastly, as Jonathan just said, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to all, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Anyone add the comments? Is there anything anyone would like on the agenda, future agendas? Again, as always, please feel free to email me. You know, if you have, in the middle of the night, when it's burdened and you can't sleep, and you want to put something on, don't call me. Just...